One through four, first of all.
I'm ready, sir.
Okay. I will call this regular township council meeting of September 20th, 2011, to order at 7:30 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on September 15th, 2010, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record and the Star Ledger and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 16th, 2010. A note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Access Channel 21 at 2:00 PM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipany.net. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrify?
Here.
Mr. Cicero?
Here.
Mr. Farrar?
Here.
Mr. Stanton?
Here.
Council President DiPiero?
Here. Also present are Mayor Barbario, Jasmalim, our business administrator, John Inglesino, our township attorney, and Alicia Johnson, township clerk. Would you all join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as one.
Upcoming meetings: October 11th, 2011, 7:30 PM, our agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. October 18th, 2011, 7:30 PM, regular meeting, public invited, public participation. And now we have a proclamation from Mayor Barbario.
This is a proclamation, the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills proclamation. Whereas Anita Baldwin, who was born and raised in Parcypony, descends from two founding families, the Smiths and the Baldwins, and is in the process of selling her historic home located at 460 South Bevick Road to the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills. And whereas the first Baldwin came to the area in 1733 when Zachariah and Abraham came to preach to the Lenninglenningpe Indians. And whereas it has been recorded that there are 74 ancestors among five generations of Anita Baldwin's family that have been entered into the historic Vale Road Cemetery. And whereas the Smith Baldwin House was a federal home built in the early 19th century, circa 1830, and originally owned by Hiram Smith Jr., son of Hiram Smith, famed Colonel in the American Revolution and honorary pauper at the funeral of George Washington. And whereas Anita Baldwin, a founding member of the Parcypony Historical and Preservation Society, has worked hard to celebrate the role of history and the lives of her friends and neighbors to preserve the heritage that has so aptly shaped the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills. Now therefore, I, James R. Barbario, mayor of the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills, hereby acknowledge that the many contributions of Anita Baldwin and express sincere appreciation and gratitude to Anita for sharing her intriguing legacy with our community. I further express the sentiment that she will be greatly missed and extend her best wishes on her relocation to California. There you go. You're welcome.
I didn't know there were 74 people in Vale Cemetery.
That's what I heard. God. You have a monopoly on it.
Well, no, not quite. Just the old part of the cemetery. But for any of you who don't know, yeah, we've been here a long time and we're delighted that the township has seen fit to use open space monies that are dedicated for historic preservation and they're going to acquire the house. This makes everybody in Vale Cemetery very happy. They're having a party right now, I can absolutely guarantee you. And it makes it much easier for my sister and myself, since we're the generation that's leaving the house after six generations, it's a little easier to leave it knowing that it's going to be preserved. So again, Mayor, thank you very much.
I'm not done yet. Anytime you come back, you also have a key to the city of Parcypony Troy Hills.
Oh, my goodness.
There you go.
That's even bigger than the keys in my house. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for all you've done for Parcypony Troy Hills. You've always been kind to me and you've been kind to the residents of Parcypony Troy Hills.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you once again.
Congratulations, Anita.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I served with Anita on the planning board for a number of years and it was always a pleasure serving with her. Anita, we're going to miss you.
I appreciate that, County. Thank you, County.
Okay, this item is not on the agenda, but it's something we need to do. Mr. Carrify is new on the council, has replaced John Fox, and so I need to reassign the committees that John Fox was responsible for. And one of those, Paul, is Historic Preservation Advisory Committee. Mrs. Johnson will be sending out a letter to announce to them that you are the new council liaison. And also to the Morris County League of Municipalities that you're the representative for Parcypony.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I'll make the assignments. We'll go down the line. Number one, Mr. Ferrera. Number two, Mr. Stanton. Number three, Mr. Cicero. Number four, Mr. Carrify.
Yes.
And then we'll start over again. Number five, Mr. Ferrera. Number six, Mr. Stanton. Number seven, Mr. Cicero. And consent agenda, Mr. Carrify. Okay, and that should do it. Okay, number one, Mr. Ferrera. These are ordinances for introduction.
Ordinance number 2011:20. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, authorizing a lease agreement between the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills and Craftsman Farm Foundation. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed at first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parcypony Troy Hill, held on September 20, 2011. And that said, ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on October 18th, 2011, at 7:30 PM, prevailing time or as soon as thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested should be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, therefore being published by the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes. Number two.
Ordinance number 2011:21. Ordinance of Township Parcypony Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, to amend, supplement Township Code, Chapter 420, Title Water, Section 420-5, Title Water Rates, Charges, Purpose of Adjusting Water Rates. Be resolved said ordinance be introduced, read by title, passed first reading, meeting Township Council, Township Parcypony Troy Hills, held September 20th, 2011. Said ordinance be further considered for second reading, final passage. Meeting to be held on October 18th, 2011, at 7:30 PM, prevailing time, sooner after as the matter may be reached. At the municipal building, said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given the opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved clerk be authorized, directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
May I, Council President?
Mr. Cicero?
Thank you. September 20th, 2011, ordinance number 2011:22, an ordinance amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 23, Stop Intersections of the Code of Township Parcypony Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. Be resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting at a township council. The Township of Parcypony Troy Hills held on September 20th, 2011. That said, ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 18th, 2011, at 7:30 PM, prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes. Mr. Carrify?
Ordinance number 2011:24. An ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills, County of Morris, State of New Jersey, authorizing a lease agreement between the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills and the Parcypony Soccer Club, Incorporated, in connection with the structure located at 580 Smith Road. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills, held on September 20th, 2011, and that the said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on October 18th, 2011, at 7:30 PM, prevailing time or as soon as thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carrify, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes. And now for second reading, item five, Mr. Ferrera.
Ordinance number 2011:17. The foregoing ordinance was published in the entirety of the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills, on July 26th, 2011. Be resolved that the ordinance entitled an ordinance of the Township of Parcypony Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, to amend and supplement the Township Code, Chapter 329, entitled Sewer, Section 329-14, entitled Sewer Connection Fees, and Chapter 420, entitled Water Connection Fees, for the purpose of establishing fees for the year 2011. Be read entitled only on second reading and hearing held thereon. To be read after the hearing?
No, hold on. Hold on.
I got it. I see it.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Cicero. I will now open this portion of the meeting to the public on this ordinance only.
We vote on?
Now we'll vote after we... Okay?
I just had a quick question regarding what the current connection fee is for the sewers and like how much this differs and how much this is, I'm assuming, being raised as compared to the existing?
The water connection fee is going up $100 and the sewer connection fee is actually coming down by $130,000, $130.
So the water is going up by 120 and the sewer is decreasing by?
Water's going up about 100.
Okay.
And then sewer's decreasing by 130.
Okay. And just curious, like what the reason for the shift in both fees is?
We're required under state law to adjust connection fees and it's based on costs.
So costs have gone down to connect sewers?
Well, the reason the costs have gone down is because there are more units to allocate the cost to. A lot of the, I shouldn't say a lot, some of the garden apartments converted to individual meters.
As opposed to having one, like a large one for the whole system?
Yes. So that added additional units that we could charge for a connection fee.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion. Continue, please.
Whereas the above ordinance was read, entitled, and second reading, and hearing held thereon, now therefore be resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that and notice final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ferrera, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes. Okay, Mr. Stanton.
Ordinance number 2011:18. Foregoing ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Parcypony Troy Hills, July 26th, 2011. Be resolved said ordinance entitled, ordinance amended Section 285-4, Schedule A, No Parking Fire Zones of Article 1, Chapter 285, Parking of the Code of Township Parcypony Troy Hills, to establish fire zones, regulate parking at Courtyard by Marriott, 3769 Route 46, Block 136, Lot 70. Be read entitled only on second reading and a hearing held thereon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Ferrera. Roll call, please. He's beating out there. Yeah, he's beating, beating over there.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
I messed up. I should have opened to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion. Continue with the, do we finish?
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes. Okay.
Whereas the above ordinance was read, entitled, on second reading, and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved said ordinance be passed on final reading, said notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
I think we're going out of order on that one, but okay, we'll finish it up. Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Cicero. Roll call, please.
Which item are we on? Sorry, number 18?
Number six.
Okay, yes.
We're doing six.
Okay. Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
May I, Council President?
Yeah, we have a slightly different format here and it's taking a little while to get used to it. Okay, Mr. Cicero?
Thank you. September 20th, 2011, ordinance number 2011:19. The foregoing ordinance was published in its entirety in Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township Parcypony Troy Hills, on July 26th, 2011. Be it resolved that ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 285-4, Schedule A, No Parking Fire Zones of Article 1 of Chapter 285, Parking of the Code of Township of Parcypony Troy Hills, to establish fire zones and regulate parking at 5 Eastman's Road, Block 739, Lot 4. Be read entitled only on second reading and a hearing held thereon. Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Stanton. I'll open to the public on this ordinance only. Seeing no one come forward, I close the public portion.
Whereas the above ordinance was read, entitled, on second reading, and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Second.
Motion by Mr. Cicero, second by Mr. Stanton. Roll call, please.
Mr. Carrify?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. President, before we go into public hearing, just wanted to compliment our new clerk. For the folks in the audience, she's been compartmentalizing a lot of our stuff into like one sheet of paper. So the second readings usually have a cover plus a second page or a third page. She's been putting everything into one page, but she's been doing that with everything, our agendas and so, thank you for saving us paper money, helping the environment. Thank you.
That's the format we have to get used, I have to get used to.
Just follow my lead, gentlemen. Follow my lead.
And no industrial stables.
Okay, I will now open to the public on any matter whatsoever. Come up, state your name and address. You have five minutes and our tally keeper is...
I got it. Brian. And thank you, Mr. Cicero, for the compliment.
I'm sorry?
I said thank you for the compliment.
Oh, you're welcome, ma'am.
Good evening, Bob Crawford, 35 Hidden Glen Drive in Parcypony. I'd like to take this opportunity, if I may, to read a letter into the record and the letter, some of you may have seen it, was in the Daily Record today. Actually, it was the featured letter, so it was kind of hard to miss because it was bolded a bit. The headline on the letter is Candidate Attorney General Must Investigate Election Fraud. The letter reads as follows. It would appear that Judge Thomas Wiesenbeck believes that during the June 7th Republican primary, electoral fraud may have been perpetuated against the citizens of Parcypony by third parties operating on behalf of certain Republican candidates running for the Parcypony Town Council. Who those third parties were and who they were working for is not clear at this point in time, but it is absolutely critical that those who may have broken the law be brought to justice before the general election in November. The Attorney General must launch an immediate investigation to determine if crimes were committed during the run-up to the primary and rid our town of the taint of political corruption that is now settling over it. As a Republican candidate who participated in the June 7th primary for a seat on the Parcypony Town Council, I'm calling on the other Republican candidates, Mayor James Barbario, to join me in calling for an immediate investigation by the Attorney General. It was signed by Bob Crawford. So therefore, Mr. Farrar, would you join me in calling for an immediate investigation by the Attorney General into any and all fraud that may?
Mr. Crawford, you can address the chair.
Thank you very much. In the past, I've seen speakers speak to other people, but that's fine.
Mr. Crawford, if I may, the purpose of the public portion of the meeting is to permit the public to make statements and of course to ask questions concerning the town business to members of the council. But the chair, Mr. DiPiero, as a council president, is the chair and he sets the guidelines.
I appreciate that. Same operating procedure in Board of Education, I didn't know to apply here. Mr. DiPiero, I would like to ask various members of the council who ran in the primary, if they would be willing to join the...
As a matter of fact, Mr. Crawford, you wrote, you read a similar statement at our last council meeting.
Yes, I did.
And we all responded to you at that time. We do not need to be redundant.
Mr. DiPiero, given the fact that I have a few more minutes left, the purpose of the statement I made at the last meeting was to ask Mr. Inglesino, and he was kind enough to explain to me the process by which that would be undertaken in terms of an investigation. He made very clear that indeed it was up to the Attorney General. This differs from that because at that point I had not made a call to the Attorney General to launch an investigation. I am simply now, with that new information, therefore this request is very different, going to ask the elected representatives of this town, who were candidates in the Republican primary, if they will join me in calling upon the Attorney General to launch an investigation into whatever fraud may have existed on June 7th primary. And I started by asking Mr. Ferrera if he would do so. But I will defer to you in terms of whether or not I can ask each of you, who are candidates, to make a statement that you will join me in calling for an investigation to ensure that there was no fraud perpetuated against our citizens.
I will remind you, and it's on the record from the last meeting.
I understand.
You did make those charges against Team Parcypony at the last meeting, okay? Every one of us responded to you that we would welcome an investigation. You're bringing it up again is simply redundant.
Mr. DiPiero, I did not mention Team Parcypony once. In fact, it was you...
No, you didn't.
No, I didn't. No, I don't. We can go back to the record. I was very clear.
I know you didn't.
I did not mention Team Parcypony. You raised Team Parcypony after I made the statement because you were worried about the fact that Team Parcypony had been misjudged. I should say to you, and I've been very careful not to make an allegation in any way against any team whatsoever. I am not making an allegation now. I am simply asking, will the elected representatives in this town before the general election join me in a call to the Attorney General to investigate? This is a new request on my part. I did not make it in the past.
It's the same request on a different day.
It is not the same request. If you go back and look at the tape, Council President DiPiero, you will see that there was no request made, there was no representative...
Okay, I will answer you for me, all right?
Thank you very much, that's what I'm asking.
I have absolutely no problem. In fact, I would like us to be vindicated, so I would like to see the Attorney General do an investigation.
But may I ask the other council members?
Because these allegations that you're making, okay, are untrue, first of all, okay? They're insulting to us and I would love to be cleared, so absolutely let them investigate.
Good, and I'm not one to make any allegations. As I referenced, this was Judge...
Well, you're the one that keeps writing the letters to the editor.
May I ask the other council members who were candidates if they will...
Is that appropriate, Counselor?
I think it's, I mean, it's certainly appropriate, but I would point out, as I did at the last meeting, that the Attorney General's office had a representative observing at the trial itself.
I understand.
The Attorney General's office is fully well aware of what occurred in the courtroom, is fully well aware of the opinion, and the Attorney General's office is engaged in reviewing the matter, but it is a, it's a law enforcement matter. It's, I mean, you can make whatever matter you want to, political and certainly legally, the council is able to say whatever it wants to say in that regard, but I do want to point out that the Attorney, it's not as though the Attorney General's office is unaware of what occurred in the courtroom, but certainly the council is free to make on their own behalf whatever statements they want to make.
Yeah, and I would ask that I'm not, and you were very clear and very helpful in terms of that statement that you made the last time. And I'm not trying to bring this to the Attorney General, what he may or may not do.
She.
She, excuse me, what she or may not do. I'm simply asking a question. Will the council members, who were candidates, and Mr. DiPiero has said that he would, join me in a call to the Attorney General for an investigation? And if I may, I'd like to direct that to Mr. Farrar for his, but I would defer to you in terms of process.
All right, the council's free to answer if they wish.
Mr. Farrar, would you join me in that call?
No, I will not join you, but they could call for an investigation anytime. I have nothing to hide. The Attorney General can investigate whatever they want.
Okay.
I will not join you into anything.
Okay.
Because I'm very curious.
I'll clarify, I'm not joining you either. I just would welcome an investigation.
Right, no problem.
That's fine, Mr. Stanton, would you welcome an investigation?
The same thing I said last week. I run an absentee campaign.
I understand, but would you welcome an investigation?
Well, let me finish.
Okay.
Same thing I said last week. I run an absentee campaign. Everything I do is documented in the county, so if they want to run an investigation, I'm fine with it because it's going to prove exactly what I'm saying.
That's all.
That everything I do is clean and legit.
Thank you. Mr. Carrify?
Yes, I agree with the fellow councilmen.
And Mayor Barbario.
I do agree and I will, but I also call for the fact that, so you know, Bob, you retained 330-something absentee ballots yourself, so you should be under that investigation yourself.
Absolutely, I welcome it.
So, because I mean, 360, 300-something absentee ballots just don't come by accident, so.
That's a lot more, that's a lot more than I received and Johnny Fox received.
Yeah, so I mean, you would also have to be under that realm. Yeah, so, I mean, you would also have to be under that realm. You can't paint the board, you can't paint, just let me finish. You can't paint the broad brush on the council, I'll paint one on yourself.
Absolutely.
So you need to be investigated as well.
Absolutely. I'm calling for the investigation. I'm asking you...
That's great. That's good.
Thank you very much, Mr. DePiero.
Okay, anyone else wish to speak?
Michelle Gaynor, 2 Elf Court, Parsippany. I have two different things. First would be...
Excuse me, ma'am. Would you sign the ledger with your name and address, please?
The first thing would be the soil contamination in Lower Lake Hiawatha. I had a few people come to me and express their concern, and I did reach out to the DEP. And I do know they will be in town talking to those residents that are immediately affected, and they will help remediate their property. What about the small park in that area? Because residents did say they saw a lot of malt and dirt thrown on top of the soil, and they want to make sure that any contamination is removed and taken care of.
Tomorrow morning, I'll be meeting with the DEP in regards to that. They were down yesterday. Just so you know, this is an ongoing process. As you know, all those have been affected. I have visited several homes yesterday with the contamination of oil, and we'll be setting up some sort of criteria that the DEP, the Township Bulletin, but we're definitely on it, so you know. And if you can contact my office tomorrow, we're trying to get the DEP. Thanks to our township attorney, he, you know, we, he sent a letter to the DEP, and they responded pretty quick to come back to Parsippany. So it's been an ongoing process, but we're going to do everything to help every resident down there in Lake Hiawatha and Buckway Neck and other parts of Parsippany as well.
Okay. The other thing would be, are you still taking comments? Is there a public hearing on Sinagro? Is that done? I have a lot of concerns.
You can comment on Sinagro anytime you want. I mean, that's the public, listen to the public portion.
You can, it's on a consent agenda tonight, but you can comment on it now if you wish.
Well, I would like to know what type of research you have done to ensure Parsippany will not be having any type of extra emission problems? Are you trucking in the waste? What about all the trucks, diesel trucks coming in with waste from other towns? We're in a non-attainment area for air quality. What is coming out and what will come out of these, the stacks?
Did you attend any of the public hearings that we had?
No, I missed it.
Yeah, I can answer that. I can address that. My law partner, John Witzscala, was the point person on that. And at the last meeting, there was a public hearing in which he gave a pretty comprehensive overview of that matter. And he indicated, and by the way, the public record is made by way of transcript and is available for yourself or any member of the public that wants to review it. But he indicated the standard by which DEP would review it is that there can be zero impact on the environment, zero impact on the environment. So, you know, it's, it's hard to set the bar any higher than that. So there will be, in order for this to be approved by the DEP, there can be no impact whatsoever.
That's hard to imagine. No impact.
Well, it's, I mean, it's, that's the standard, and that's the standard that DEP will utilize.
Okay, but the company itself, they've had issues in New York, Maryland, Rhode Island, Philadelphia. They've had a lot of claims against them and issues with what they do and how they operate. Have you looked into the company itself?
Well, again, as part of the public presentation that Mr. Witzscala made last week, there was comprehensive review of Sinagro, of their operations, of their history, and also of their, of their financial obligations that they would be taking on in connection with this.
And you're confident?
I think that the, that the view is, well, it's up to the council, but I think the view of certainly our office and the administration is that, that there was nothing to cause discomfort at all from Sinagro, and there's full confidence that they have the ability and will perform under their contract as, as signed, if it is approved by the council.
Okay. Can I have one more question? Why wasn't the Environmental Advisory Council or Committee consulted?
I'll answer that for you. First and foremost, I met with the Environmental Committee this week. They had no issue with it. People were speaking on their behalf in regards to it. Only two members had issues with not meeting with the Environmental Committee. Fact of the matter is, I spoke to the Environmental Committee. When this was, this came forward, I wasn't the mayor at the time. The former mayor is the one that approved the Sinagro, okay? He didn't include the Environmental Committee on it. And to be fact, to be honest with you, it's a, it's a closed-session type of meeting. There's privileged information that goes back and forth. What I would have done, if I were the mayor then, I would have asked him questions to maybe ask Sinagro or anything like that. But they weren't, they weren't involved in the process, no. And when I spoke to them on Wednesday, they pretty much told us they didn't have an issue with the Sinagro. They didn't have an issue with the Sinagro project itself. There was just two members who were critical of it, but seemed to come out now instead of coming out in 2009 when the project began. So it's an issue now because we have changed in administrations, but it wasn't an issue then. So, and when I spoke to the chairman, the chairman said, basically, no one speaks on the behalf of the Environmental Committee. And people have been speaking on the behalf, not you, I don't mean you personally, but that's what we were told on Wednesday. Councilman Ferraro was with me at the time, and actually, most of the members were kind of surprised when I read the email that was given to me and the letter to the editor on the Parsippany Life. They were pretty much, they had no clue that letter was even, most of them were pretty much didn't realize that was even an issue. So that's something I wouldn't have basically included the Environmental Committee in.
I just feel it's, it's an issue where I think residents could be impacted, and I think the health and safety of the people, especially in that surrounding area, needs to be addressed.
Well, we go by criteria, as you know, the DEP and the US EPA. Although these permits are very difficult to get, Sinagro won't get these permits because these are very stringent, very stringent regulations to get. It's not up to the township for us to, for them to get the permit process. It's up to the NJDEP and the US EPA, and they're stringent. Their rules are very stringent. So in regard to that, we've had a senator in town, I think approximately 30 years, that was running not efficiently. So was this, we stopped using it, so now we're refurbishing, waxing, we're building a whole new one.
This one is far more efficient, far cleaner, smaller, will handle the load better. And Sinagro is completely under, under the guise of the EPA and the DEP, and our own local express will be watching them too when they construct it and when they operate. So there's a lot of eyes on Sinagro, okay, from the federal government on down. So we're confident that they're not going to spend $60 million if they're going to do a shoddy job or not, and not meet those EPA and DEP standards.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Joe Raish, 8 Wolf Place, Parsippany. I noticed on one of our publications that come through to town that the planning board was addressed, and the recommendations were made to put 10-foot stilts, I believe, on any new planning that goes into the Lower Lake Hiawatha and, I guess, Parsippany area down there. And I questioned whether or not that was the best possible statement that could be made to the planning board. Perhaps we need to take a step back, and I would be recommending a moratorium on building in the town until we could figure out exactly how we ought to proceed about remediating the problem that exists with the flooding, how the water flows from the reservoir, its effect on the river, its effect on the entire project that was, that's been established that worked extremely well in the early parts of this flooding time. It was the second flood that I, that I'm up here raising the point as to how, if there's anyone here that could explain to, to all of us just how the piping works out of that reservoir and how the water could be going downstream as opposed to flooding the Green Acre area along Green Bank Road and the reservoir back there. I feel that there's a considerable amount of area that would have substantially taken most of the hit during this hurricane. I realize it was a terrible hurricane, my personally. My power was out for 12 hours, and it came back. I had no problem until the evacuation call was made. I'd like your responses.
Well, I'll respond to your first part, Mr. Raish. The proposal I made to the planning board did not recommend putting houses on 10-foot stilts. Okay, that's incorrect. What I did recommend to the planning board was that we look at an ordinance that raises the level of new construction based on the topographical maps, if you know what those are, okay? So that the lowest points might have to be raised to the, whatever that 500-year flood that we received, whatever that level is. So based on the topo maps, the ones down at the lower, near the swim club, might have to go up, the cinder block would go up six more feet. As you go up the hill, of course, that would be reduced, and then three or four blocks up, you wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't change if they're not in the defined floodplain. So the recommendation was for new construction. At the same time, I also asked that we investigate the feasibility, if some homeowners want, I understand that there's, there are funds available, I don't know how much, and what you have to do to apply. That's why I asked the administration to look into.
Absolutely.
That if they wanted to apply for this, they could have their homes raised. You know, you actually just pick up the house, put some more cinder blocks, and then put the house back down again so that the houses, their first floors are higher, and they would get some, some aid for that. So that was what I recommended to the planning board. The 10-foot stilts is common on the shorefront properties where they, and even in the Connecticut shorefront, so that the entire ground level, there's no living quarters. It's simply a carport and possibly a shed, and all the living quarters start on the second floor. That's common on shorefront property. I was not recommending that. We don't need to go that high, I don't think, but I think we do need to go, if we're going to adopt an ordinance like this, go at least as high as where that 500-year flood took us.
And what would be the status of a moratorium?
What moratorium?
I'm recommending a moratorium on building in Parsippany.
Legally, that's not permissible.
No, you have to have legal grounds for a moratorium.
The citizens don't have a right to...
No, no, you do not.
So we have to get an attorney to go and fight this? Is that what you're saying?
No. The last moratorium we had...
To call for a moratorium? What would be the procedure, Mr. Attorney?
What I'm saying is, you just can't simply pass an ordinance or a resolution declaring a moratorium in the township of Parsippany Shroy Hills. There isn't a constitution. People do have rights with respect to their property, and you just can't preclude people from building on it.
Extenuating circumstances.
Well, a 500-year flood is that.
Certainly.
It occurs once every 500 years. I think the argument could probably be made that there is less risk that the 500-year flood would occur now than there, than there was a few weeks ago when it had been 500 years prior. But in any case, that really doesn't matter. My counsel is that what you're proposing is not legally permissible.
Now, what would be the procedure to fight it legally?
To fight what?
Fight for a moratorium.
Well, there, I mean, you'd have to, in my opinion, under the circumstances that you describe a moratorium, the procedure would be to amend the United States Constitution.
Well, maybe, maybe something else will be done.
Pappy Tacho, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Got a couple of hopefully quick things. I saw your ordinance is coming up. Your water rates, they're going up. Can you tell us how much it'll be going up?
That water rate, it's just the new fee for a 10-inch main. We hadn't had that in our ordinance before, but we, we have someone who is constructing a 10-inch main.
So no water increases?
No, no. She's asking about a water usage increase. We don't have any water usage increase.
No, we're just adding, we're adding a fee for, for a 10-inch main.
Yeah. She's asking about a water usage.
Last week, I had put in a call to the Board of Adjustments regarding 21 Summit Street. Property owner purchased that property about five or six years ago. They went into the Board of Adjustments for variance. Last July, they received that variance, and the property has not been taken care of since then, even though the resolution states that they ought to take care of it. In any case, with the flood from Irene, they had a driveway that went down, and then the garage was down there. So a bunch of neighbors had saw that there was water collected in front of the garage door, so they made a few phone calls, and nothing went on. Then when I was calling last week, I asked, it was Peggy I spoke to, to see what they can do about this because it's going to create a health hazard. It was getting a little stinky over there. She said she'd contact the homeowner, the owner of the property, and the next thing I know hazmat was there pumping it out. Okay, that's great. Stunk like hell, but it was great that they came. I want to know who's getting charged for that. Is the homeowner getting charged for our hazmat coming out and doing something they should have taken care of? Let me ask that question. I mean, that's a lot of money.
I'm not absolutely sure, but I'm pretty certain that we submit to FEMA for reimbursement.
And nobody goes to the owner of the property?
No, we, we pretty consistently provide pump-out services to, you know, in, in normal storms, we would, we don't. The fire departments or hazmat will provide that service.
If a resident calls any of the fire districts, you know, from a rain, they'll go pump it out for them.
Right. If they needed help. But I mean, this person made no, no effort at all. She works in the building across the street. She knows what that property looks like. They have not taken care of it as per their resolution. They finally got somebody out there just recently to cut the grass. Another neighbor has been tending it. These are some of the problems that we had brought to the Board of Adjustment when this went through. So just to let you know, I really think they should be penalized for that. The school tax. The state had given the school back $1.2 million, and they voted to have this money come back to the taxpayers. I know there was a discussion between Jasmine and Mike Strumalo and what have you, just trying to get in a roundabout figure. And this money was supposed to show as a credit on our fourth quarter. I received my bill. I do not see any credits on my fourth quarter. Where is this $1.2 million, please? School board turned it over to the town.
It wasn't a credit. It's just the taxes to be raised for the Board of Education was reduced.
By $1.2 million?
Well, it was, it was actually by $600,000 because it's half this year and half next year.
I'm not getting you. What?
If, if the school board was going to have to raise $30 million from the taxpayers this year.
Right.
That $30 million was reduced to 28.8 million.
So you didn't do what the school board asked to do?
No, we did.
No, you didn't.
We reduced the amount to be raised.
It was supposed to show as a tax credit on a taxpayer's tax bill. That's what was told to us. That's what was in the meeting notes. That's what's in the paper. Okay, so just check it out, because now I'm really aggravated. Because even though it's a little amount of money, it just shows you things don't go where they're supposed to go. And I'm really upset about that.
That's not true, though.
It is true. Jamie, you can, you can acknowledge that way, please, please.
I'm responding to you, Pat. If we can't have dialogue, that's...
Because you're going to give me the same story that Jasmine just gave me.
No, but it is being reduced, but that $600,000 that needs to be raised, and it's, whatever they, you know, you know how to figure it out.
I understand what you're saying, Jamie. I am not stupid. I understand it. You're not understanding me. It was told to us a different way. It was supposed to be done a different way.
Well, I...
Okay? That's the way it is. It's in the papers that way. It's on the school board tape that way. That's the way it was supposed to go. Okay? And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be arrogant, but that is exactly it. Can I have one more, please? Just please, because this really...
All right, quickly, go ahead.
We have, we have a problem in this town. Absentee ballots. There are a lot of people who had very high absentee ballots. Mr. Karifi had some of his own. Everybody has them, except that it's getting to be used the wrong way. I'm going to request the Board of Elections to stop this, of handing out absentee ballots. It just makes it so much easier for fraud to occur. But Team Parsippany's name has been mentioned in the papers, okay? And I think Team Parsippany should really stand up and say, yeah, let's get this straightened down, especially when Parsippany's name is in the paper again. I mean, it's, it's just, it's terrible.
Pat, we did. And I believe the attorney, Alan Zakin, is going to issue a statement, hopefully soon. The statement says that there was no evidence that any member of Team Parsippany did anything illegal. And hopefully that comes out soon, because none of us did anything illegal.
You're not saying anybody did.
I can't imagine how...
I'm just saying it looks terrible for Parsippany.
Well, I agree, and I don't like it, but we didn't do anything wrong or illegal.
Okay.
I never have violated election laws, and I've never instructed or requested anybody else to violate election laws, not in the 34 years I've been an elected official in Parsippany. And I don't believe any of my running mates did either, and they have stated that. What else we can do, I don't know. Let the investigation vindicate us. I welcome it. But we did nothing wrong. I mean, I mean, all they said was they had, uh, it, what's his name, Shaw? What's his first name? Jigger. Jigger Shaw brought a bunch of absentee ballots down to Morristown and he was helping Team Precipiny. That's what he's guilty of, okay? Nobody broke into these 12, uh, the Indian apartments and broke into their locked mailboxes to get their 12 ballots so that we could fill them out in place of them. I mean, I mean, it's, it's actually ludicrous to think that any of us would, would break into mailboxes. Or the other thing we might have done was maybe we broke into the post office and looked for those 12 and took them out.
Nah, I think basically people, you know, hand them out as they go around, but you know what I'm saying.
My point is, Pat, I mean, these charges, you know, it's linked to us, it's linked to us and we did nothing wrong.
Yeah, I hope so.
And, and my running mates, I said, we should not change our name, we should, we're not guilty of anything, we have no reason to change our Team Precipiny name, we did nothing wrong. And hopefully we get vindicated before this is all over.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
My question has to do with the property and casualty insurance policy that expires this year and a new contract has to be awarded. I know there was controversy over the contract award last year.
Can you please speak in the microphone, I can't hear.
Oh, yeah, I was talking about the, hi.
No, I mean, I know what you're saying.
Okay. I was talking about the property and casualty insurance that has to be awarded this year, it's expiring, and a new one has to be awarded. And I had mentioned there was controversy over the contract the last time. I was just wondering what the status of it was. Have bids been submitted? How many bids have been submitted? And what's the estimated timeframe for a decision on that?
Well, our brokers are in the process of preparing an RFP. It should be ready in days. That RFP needs to be submitted to the State Comptroller's Office for approval.
Mm-hmm.
And then they'll go out and solicit proposals from...
Okay, so there's no bids yet? There's no, you don't have any yet?
No. It, it should go out within a month.
And then the timeframe is for year end, for the bids to be submitted and decided on?
Before year end, yes.
Before year end. Thank you.
Annalise Kattonero, 67, Midvale Avenue. One positive note I just wanted to reinforce, I'm really glad that the mayor chose to, and the council chose to use open space funds for purchase of the Baldwin House. I think it would be a shame to have something like that, that would fall to the wayside or into the hands of the wrong person, so kudos to you on that. The other thing I wanted to mention, sort of echoing, and I don't, Ms. Gaynor's comments, I think that the incinerator contract should be something that we move outside of the consent agenda. Of course, it's at the will of the council, but I think there's been enough questions and enough concerns about it that it should not be something that's just blanketly approved and it should be something that we do as a roll call vote. So that's just a procedural request that I wanted to pose to the chair. So, thank you.
Annalise, the, we, we've had two public hearings on this. We've, we've had rather lengthy explanations and, and comments from experts on this issue. The public hearings, the public could speak at, at those sessions. So we've, we've, we've given it due process, all due respect, we've given it due process. Now, if any council member wishes to have this withdrawn and vote on it separately, they may do so. But we've been through this at, at two public meetings and we met with Synagro and the administration met with them for, for months before even the council got involved in...
May I ask you a question, Annalise? Why wasn't it an issue in 2009 when you ran with the former mayor?
This is not something that was brought up. Everything was done in closed session negotiations and frankly, I wasn't privy to knowledge about that.
No, 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 no. Sewer, sewer refurbishment and improvement was always undone on the record.
I don't understand why it wasn't an issue in 2009.
Always done on the record.
I was under the implication that they were separate projects, so that the sewer renewal, so the overhaul of the sewer plant was a separate project.
The many, the many presentations we had included everything.
I don't, well, my point is this, you didn't make it an issue when you were running with the former mayor, but now you're making it an issue now.
We're making a decision on it now. When, when, if, when Mayor Luther was, was mayor...
If you're going to talk about having dialogue with the Environmental Committee, that's when the issue should have been brought up.
That's fine. I mean, I'm not saying that Mayor Luther is a perfect person, but I'm saying when we're in, in the process right now and we're making a decision on that process...
That's all I'm saying, I didn't mention his name. I'm just saying, I just, I just kind of, it just confuses me why it wouldn't be an issue in 2009.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. The role of the Environmental Advisory Committee is to advise the mayor and council on issues related to the environmental and health, you know, safety of our community, that it would be a no-brainer that we would do something to...
But you ran with, you ran for a member with the Environmental Committee. I wasn't an issue with her either. I, that's, I'm just, just...
Respectfully, Mayor, this is not something that we were making any sort of decision on, and I was a candidate. I wasn't privy to any closed session negotiations.
And you're a candidate now.
I am, and we're making it a, you're voting on it today. That's why it's an issue today. It has nothing to do with who started it.
Well, it should have been an issue then, too.
I'm talking about you gentlemen have the ability to finish this contract and to move forward into a 20-year, you know, partnership.
No disrespect, Annalise, but it's just pretty much funny how it comes up now, that's all.
Mayor, you, you made your point, Annalise, and you made your point, Mayor. Thank you. Anyone wish to have a separate vote on Synagro?
I, I should just have a separate question, if you don't mind, for town, town attorney. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding all the presentations correct, correctly. We are held, Precipiny's held harmless on this contract, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So if there is a DEP issue, the lady sitting right there in the third row, she makes a reasonable point. Anything can happen on this, in this world. If there is, they will take care of it, they will address it.
There's indemnifications, there's hold harmless, as, as was explained last week, all of the financial risk concerning the project is on Synagro, none of it is on the municipality. And the DEP is, is responsible and will thoroughly review all of the permitting issues. I would like to, if I may, just make a very quick comment regarding environmental commissions because I've had some experience with those in numerous towns. Usually environmental committees and commissions are formed in an advisory capacity for the purpose of primarily providing informal advice and counsel with respect to land use applications and any environmental issues that may arise from that. But when a matter comes before either the board or the council, which is within the sole province of the Department of Environmental Protection, then, then that is where the environmental review occurs. In this particular instance, the Synagro project involves significant and complex environmental issues which the municipality is neither equipped to, to address nor empowered to address. And all of those issues will be addressed and handled thoroughly by the State Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay, thank you, counselor. See, no one come forward, they closed the public portion.
Council President, at this time, as part of the public hearing that was held on the Synagro contract, Mr. Wallace, Wallace Scala stated, for the record, that the public hearing will be, remain, will remain open for seven days to submit any written objections to the contract being awarded. So therefore, at this particular time, the seven days are up and the clerk's office just wanted to state that there were no statements submitted to the clerk or the council in objection in a written format.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda, Mr. Karifi.
All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Township Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Second. Motion by Mr. Karifi, second by Mr. Cesaro. Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
All right, now, we have to go into closed session.
Would you like me to read that?
Now, Mr. Stanton has to read it.
Resolution, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, PL 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from the meeting in certain circumstances, whereas the Township Council has the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss personnel matters, whereas minutes will be kept, once the matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved, Township Council of the Township Precipity Troy Hills, public be excluded from this meeting.
Second. Motion by Mr. Stanton, second by Mr. Cesaro. Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
Have a good night, everyone. Drive safely.
I don't expect to see a blog tomorrow, Pat, so...
What's it, tomorrow?
I've been privy to the, the calories.
Hi, how are you?
I'm serious.
I wish I...
We are?
Yes, we're going, yeah, we're leaving, we're going to James.
We're going to James, he's right there. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Do we need to do a roll call again?
If you could reconvene for the time for me, sir, and then a motion?
Make a motion to reconvene back to the public meeting.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
And the council reconvened at...
8:37.
8:37 is what I say, too, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Now we're back in session, I'll entertain the ultimate motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cesaro, second by Mr. Stanton.
Have a good one, everyone.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Karifi to adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro to adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara to adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton to adjourn?
Yes.
Mr. De Piero?
Yes.
We're hereby adjourned at 8:43.
Now, what if I say no? Stay here.